Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 13, 2015 Board of Education meeting. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we turn to the, we're gonna, we're gonna try to move a couple of items up on the agenda specifically eight point one and eight point two to try to get Mr. Jarvis and the music department back home where they belong preparing for tomorrow. But before we get to the formal agenda, I would like to just note and with thanks that this is Mrs. Dudley's last televised Board of Education meeting. She will join us hopefully for the last workshop meeting at the end of the month. But Barbara Dudley has served on the Board of Education for, I believe, ten years if I have counted correctly. And as a retired teacher, when she first joined the board, I think we, we all thought that she might be able to add a valuable perspective and thought that she might be able to, to, to offer us some, some wisdom from her experience as a longtime teacher in this district. And I think all of our expectations and hopes were exceeded frankly, as high as they were. Mrs. Dudley has been a tremendously valuable member of this board. Her, her experiences and perceptions as a, an active teacher, I think, we are gonna miss. And I, we, we don't do certificates, we don't do trips to anywhere as a result of, of, of your service on the board, but really the town, the board owes you a debt of gratitude for your perspective and your, your thought, your wisdom, but the town does as well. I think really everybody who is involved in public education in this town has had their experience improved because of your service on the board. And so with thanks and with gratitude, we hope, we, we hope you enjoy your, your second retirement.
Thank you.
If Dr. Myers calls you, don't answer the phone because he's trying to get you on a committee. So that's still in the cart. I'm, I'm gonna very much miss Mrs. Dudley's frequent perspective that just take it easy, everybody, you know? In, in six months, it's all gonna be, everybody's gonna be okay with it and by the end of the first year, it's gonna be much better. By the end of the second year, even better. By the end of the third year, everybody will have forgotten what the original fuss was all about, which, which I'm going to miss. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
There are a couple of quick items to add to the agenda. If there would be a motion to add nine point eight, I just wanted to keep on the agenda the committee about the baseball field and the Guilford High School gym, so we don't drop that off. And also to add an item thirteen, twelve, twelve and, and executive session on a discipline issue. So is there a motion to add those two?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Why don't we just go to, straight to eight point one right now? That's the GHS Music Department request, so come on up.
I, I hope that you have some information in your packets about the proposal here, but as I think many of you know, the music department has gotten in a habit, if you will, routine of, of traveling every so often. And this year, I would like to bring the Wind Ensemble, which is our select band of about fifty-five students, and the Concert Band, which is the rest of the musicians, about a hundred and five or so students, on a trip to Disney World where they would obviously see some of the attractions at Disney World, but more importantly, they would participate in a, a performance there and a clinic there, which I've, I did the same trip in 2006 with the group and it was a wonderful success. Not all the students would be, from those two groups would be going. I'm estimating, based on the initial poll that I took of students, that we'd be somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-five to eighty-five students. Won't know precisely until I ask students to, to put down a deposit. But we would be going from April 11th to the 15th, which is during the April break. Students wouldn't miss any school. And, you know, I, I just know from my feedback from the students that went on the last trip what a, what a great experience it was for them. A great deal of fun, but also musically very enriching and something that they've, that they remembered and, and really gained a lot from in the past. So I've appreciated over the years all of the Board of Ed's support and all of our travels, but hope that once again, we can have your support for, for this trip.
Question, should the, should a individual student with a financial need want to go? Do we have funds to support him?
Yes. So it's actually one of, one of the first things that, that I do when sending out information about the trips is to try and get some feedback from students. Anyone who is in that situation approaches me about it confidentially. We do an enormous amount of fundraisers, so that's one piece of the, of the puzzle, but there are also avenues to, for scholarships as needed. The music boosters as supportive of, of, of that. And, you know, we, we, we find as many creative ways as we can to make it available to, to all students.
Good. Thanks.
Mr. Masenti and I are both in support of the trip and would request your approval.
Mark, I've, I've suggested this in the past. It would be nice if, when you came back, you did a little slide presentation now that we have so much better equipment here to not only show the board, but also the community what happened and this greater enriching, enriching music performance. It would be kinda fun for the community, I think, to see what you guys do down in your trips and...
I think that's a, I think that's a great, great suggestion and if I can make that happen, I, I certainly will.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Any other comments? Do we need to approve this or you've already approved it according to your cover letter and you're just bringing it to us for information purposes?
I think it's just to you for your information.
Right. Okay. Well, I think, I think I speak for the Board that you go with our blessing and the, I know there are lots of kids that are looking forward to it. I actually know this from personal knowledge.
Me too.
There are actually a fair number of kids that are looking forward to this, so it sounds great and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And eight point two, Mr. Jarvis, please.
The athletic department is requesting that the boys' hockey team, they were invited to play in the Massachusetts Fallen Hero Hockey Tournament on December 26th and December 27th. They'll be staying overnight on Saturday, the 26th and returning on Sunday.
Questions?
Again, an overnight athletic is, an overnight athletic event is unusual. It requires us to bring it to your attention. Still not, I wanna clarify and make sure that we don't need your action on either of these. If we do, I can bring them back on a later agenda.
Somebody who's got their computer up and they can go to six, a policy number, what is it? Six, three, two, six.
Certainly wouldn't hurt for the board to take action on either one. No harm can be done by the board approving both of these activities.
Okay. Well, all right. Why don't we do it, why don't we do it as one agenda item in just a minute? Is Mr. Jarvis there busing up to, to Massachusetts and then staying overnight?
Busing, well, lodging and food for the team. The Guilford Hockey Club has done all the fundraising, so they're going to financially support it. It won't cost the athletic department or the Board of Ed anything.
Okay.
Or the families.
If the families wanna go up and stay over, that's on their own part.
Won't cost the families or the students a go.
No, they've been fundraising for this activity.
That's great. And, and so families are all okay with, you know, they may not be able to take vacations or whatever.
We don't have the exact number because our team is not selected yet. It's a winter sport.
Right, of course. I guess that's true. Right. Okay. Other questions? Other, other comments? Just taking a long time.
Just taking a while to connect.
Why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead? Is, is everybody in concurrence there, does everybody concur that this should be approved?
Yeah.
Okay. Then why don't we add to the agenda a nine point nine, which is approve overnight field trip requests for GHS Music Department and boys' ice hockey as explained by faculty and administrator. All right? Motion to...
Motion to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the actual substantive motion, is there a motion to approve those two field trips?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That either is or isn't necessary under our policy. We'll look up the policy at some point and get back to you.
An abundance of caution if nothing else.
But you might as well approve it because it sounds terrific.
Thank you.
It's not necessary under six, three, two, six.
Thank you.
Approvals by the superintendent who reports it to the Board of Education.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. All right, Mr. Jarvis, I'm sorry. As long as you're here, I know, I wanna cut you loose and let you go home, but the concussion policy that we have a little later in the, the agenda, you've worked, you're, you're familiar with the new policies, obviously, and, and with the state policies and you've assisted Dr. Keen in, in developing these policies.
We've been ahead of the curve on that, actually.
Excellent.
Where, where our district has been one of the leaders with Dr. Northwell in our community of concussion management for us to an athlete. So we're much, much, much aligned with the goals and, and the laws of the state and we go above and beyond.
Policy's been catching up with Guilford for a couple of years now.
But I, in the process, the policy committee, I, Mr. Bowden can by speak to this, but, but Mr. Jarvis did in fact review, I think, what we wrote up as well. Is that correct?
We've had discussions about what was in the original legislation.
Terrific, okay.
And he's reported back that everything in the legislation has been practiced in Guilford for the past couple of years and also have reviewed it with Carol Hott as well.
Carol Hott, that's right. Terrific.
Our athletic handbook has a sign-off sheet that all parents and so athletes have to sign off of, that they've gone over the policy and that's how we educate them. But we also did it back to school night. We had our parents come in and we did, our trainer and our assistant trainer came in and gave a whole presentation on it also to try to educate the parents on it. So we've gone, we've done everything that the law requires for us to do and more.
And sounds like more.
More, right, right. Ahead of time.
Stay with it. That's great. Glad to hear it. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis.
Thanks.
Are we gonna have to do like a quarantine of the...
Yeah, sorry.
So we're, item three on the agenda, has anybody else got here for a specific agenda item? Not really. Okay. Item three on the agenda is minutes September 15, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Dr. Myers. Three point two is September 28 workshop meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item four is public forum for topics on the board agenda? Anybody? No? All right. Item five is to review the monthly bills, which I did. We talked at length in the Operations Committee meeting a little earlier. The, the, in a nutshell, we are in reasonable shape. Rough things, items are tracking about where we thought they were. We did get some, some reasonably favorable news on our medical insurance line and also the, some of the special education expenditures. We did add staff from what was from, well, we added some and didn't add some from the budget, so that's, we're just gonna have to keep an eye on that. There've been some additions and some subtractions, in other words, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as things move forward. But right now, we're in, we're three months into a twelve-month year. We're in reasonable shape for, for the budget. The expenditures for the month of September were $4,269,889.54 and I would like to make a motion that we approve those expenditures. Any questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Communications, item six, anybody?
I did have one question about the, the sleep times or start times in the sleep. I saw on the preliminary workshop, we had it scheduled for the 26th, which is the next workshop. That's also the district leadership team meeting for the budget. Are we still on track for discussing start times on that workshop or is that being...
Not at that workshop, no, but we should be on track to have information to present to you by November and we still plan on being on track to have all of the information in front of the community and in front of the Board of Ed so that this Board of Ed can make a decision by late December, early January and the community can have the second half of the year to be informed about that decision. Mr. Dorwin is working with DMC to put some detail to some of the scenarios and then we wanna bring that information forward, both with evening meetings and most likely with a community survey, so that the community has a chance to comment and this board has the scenarios, the detail and the community response to those scenarios before being asked to make a decision moving forward.
And the, the busing report, when is that finalized or is it, is it done?
We should have that detail in the next couple of weeks. In fact, DMC will be in District later this week, I think tomorrow, Thursday, working with Mr. Dorwin to bring finality to that. And that was delayed by, by the, the changes in the Transportation Office. Mr. Peterson was gonna continue to work on that with us and that was delayed.
Okay. Any other communications that we need to talk about? So item seven, student representatives. We have student representatives, but they, but they are familiar student representatives.
Thank you.
So how do we like our new school?
It's really great.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it really is. The transition has gone very smoothly. Everyone really respects the school and just absolutely loves it. The technology is incredible and really just the transition has gone remarkably well. So we're all very happy.
Just feels like learning and coming to school every day is so much easier in this beautiful environment with technology at your fingertips that all turns and just like state-of-the-art is a, you know, I can think to describe it. Oh, really.
Terrific. Good. Okay.
Moving on, we're, I'll speak about Baldwin Middle School a bit. One of their biggest noteworthy events recently has been that they implemented a new schedule for the fifteen, sixteen school year. The average class now runs for about seventy minutes compared to forty minutes in past years. The seventy-minute period requires a different approach to instruction, which builds a variety of learning tasks and approaches, as well as opportunities for movement. And so far, the, the new schedule has been running well. At the back-to-school nights at Baldwin, parents were able to give input and ask questions and some changes have been made in the first couple of months, or first month, really, and everyone's very happy with the change. In other news at Baldwin, there was an, an author, an author visit on Tuesday, October 6th from Rob Bouyer, who was the author of several books, including Because of Mr. Terupt, which won the Nutmeg Book Award in 2013. And Mr. Bouyer presented to the entire school and shared his approach to the writing process. He stressed that failure, as well as persistence, are important to the learning, to the learning process. Moving on to Guilford Lakes, as I'm sure many of you know, they were named the Connecticut Association of Schools Elementary School of the Year and they continue to foster the sense of community that helped to earn this exciting title through their class-to-class mentoring program, which just began this year. In the program, older and younger classes are partnered together and these classes meet throughout the year to share work, read together and play together. Now moving on to Calvin Leet, their private, their primary focus has also been literacy and kindergarten students are working on stretching out their words and their writing. First graders are learning to discuss with one another, to expand their narratives before they begin writing them. And second graders are working on enhancing key moments in their writing, while third graders are beginning to write adapt, adaptations of well-known fairy tales and fourth graders are researching ecosystem dynamics by collecting and analyzing information from multiple sources. We did not receive a response from Adams Middle School and now onto the high school, finally. Many seniors are currently working on college applications. The deadline for most early decision and early action applications is November 1st, so seniors planning to apply early have asked teachers for recommendations and are completing their essays, et cetera. Also, Arcadia, our fall play is already, we're working on it. Rehearsals have begun and the shows are on, our opening night is Thursday, November 12th. We also have shows on Friday, the 13th and Saturday, the 14th. And some upcoming performances from our music department are the Fall Jazz Concert, which is tomorrow night at 7:30 with Voices and the Jazz Ensemble. It's right here in our new beautiful Performing Arts Center. And there's also the Fall Choral Concert coming up, which is next Wednesday, the 21st, at 7:30, also in our very own Performing Arts Center and that has all of our school's choirs.
And then at the other two elementary schools, I had Cox and Melissa Jones. At Cox, the fourth grade won the best float in the parade for the, what day was that? Guilford Day?
Paradise.
Paradise. There we go. Paradise Parade. And so they're all very proud of the float they put together. And then also at Cox, they've installed a new patio at their playground, which the students are all very excited about and it's a very lovely area. And then also, there's been great support for Prince, or Principal Augustine, as he is in the hospital, and all the students got together and teachers are really bonding together to power through this tough time. And then at Melissa Jones, with the new pla, or the old playground starting to fall away and the new playground coming into its, its own concept, they had their, they had a design a playground day where kids from each classroom were able to, to design their own playground, had ideas of what they wanted to put in it. And a playground designer actually met with each class to try and incorporate different ideas from all the different classes and they had a pizza truck with a DJ and an ice cream truck come for the big reveal of the playground, which sounded like quite the fun time. And then I also heard that the fourth graders, as Mark was saying, they've been learning how to draft informal ecosystems and learning about science, which I find is interesting because I'm doing that in AP Biology right now. And the main theme I got from both the emails was that basically students are getting back into the routine of school and the rhythm and it's been going great so far, which I think is true about the high school also. And speaking of the high school, our sports teams are all off to great starts. It's about midway through the fall season. Our boys' soccer team, volleyball team, girls' soccer team, and I believe the field hockey team all have winning records and the cross country's also doing well. And football is doing well under the new coach and trying to adapt and get better as the season progresses. And then next week, we have our Unity Week, which I've sure you've seen on the TVs, the different days we have for spirits. So that's a good, a nice week to bring our whole school together. And also what I'm excited about, tomorrow, we have our first unified tournament of the season for Unified Sports. It's at Amity for the SEC Soccer Tournament. And just at practice today, I felt the whole spirit of the team coming together. Everyone's getting ready and we're all excited.
It's great.
I just wanted to briefly mention that we do have a, a new student representative this year named Maddie Panagoulis. She wasn't available today because she has a soccer game, but she will be here in the future, so.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Nice to have you guys.
Very good. Any questions? Any thoughts?
You know, one, one thing, when you were talking about the new high school, one of the more poignant moments when we were discussing building a new high school was when the students came to us and said, "We don't want any more home games in basketball because we don't want other kids from other schools to see our lousy school." I assume that that's no longer true.
Definitely not.
I was actually talking with some of my teammates from basketball and they're upset that the entrance that they, that we think that the other teams will be using is basically like entering through the side and then going through the team rooms and not being able to just like have to walk around and see what it's all like.
One of, one of the nights I was here for something, there was a bunch of, was a bunch of the field hockey players were giving a tour of the building to a bunch of the field hockey players from a team whose town is just to the east of ours. And our, our folks looked pretty happy. Well, that's terrific. You know, we're, we're very glad that the reaction to the building has been very positive and, and look forward to seeing what, what transpires. We're, we're, and thank you all for, for signing up for another year. I know you've both got a lot of other things that you're, you're involved in, but I think we all appreciate your, your reports and your, your advice and we do wanna keep you in mind as we talk about the start times. You know, we know that's an issue and we know that that's an issue that has been of some debate, not only among parents and the community, but also students. And so we, we definitely wanna continue to listen and, and see what, what, what can be worked out, if anything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
But that actually reminds me that we do need at some point to put up the ball, an update on the Baldwin schedule on the agenda.
Yes, I was gonna say that. Yeah, I'd be really interested in hearing.
I think Mr. Hamill would be excited to come and do that, absolutely.
Maybe next month, something like that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We've already done most of your items, Dr. Freeman.
My report should be brief.
Yes.
And in fact, we touched on the only item that I have left last week. So in your packet, you have enrollment information and we've given you the information in several different looks. So in the broadest overview, last year in school year fourteen, fifteen, we had 3,404 students. When we put the budget together, the outside enrollment study that we commissioned had projected that we should plan for 3,291 students. Being a little more conservative than that, we had actually proposed a budget that was based on 3,331 students. We projected a declining enrollment of 73 students. As of October 1st, our official enrollment is 3,393. It's only a net loss of 11 students. We did not decline as much as we had anticipated. We actually gave you a look that we hadn't provided for in the past. We gave you a look at summer enrollments. This sheet in your packet shows that over the summer, we had 214 new enrollments. It's the colored sheet, looks like this.
Yes.
Now, we did have withdrawals and so we had offsetting withdrawals of 120, but the net was an increase of 94 new students who enrolled over the course of the summer and we showed you how they fell. Of those 94 new students, 81 of them fell at grades K through four. So when we came back at the end of the summer and suggested adding those two kindergarten sections, the, the increase in enrollment did fall at the kindergarten level, at the elementary level. Having said that, I do wanna draw your attention to the classroom look that we provide. Again, this is a format that Dr. Moore suggested a few years ago that we think works really well because it gives a historical look and it compares by grade level by school. Even with that influx of students, at the elementary level, grades K through four, we have an average class size of 17.9 and when you look across the schools, the swing by school is only from 17.8 to 18.1. It's actually the most consistent class sizes that we've had at the elementary level since I've been here. There is a high of a class of 21 at the elementary level. So the elementary levels, the elementary numbers remain something that we should be very, very proud of. The adjustment at the kindergarten level was the right thing to do. We have kindergarten class sizes that range from 16 to 18. We do not have kindergarten class sizes in this district that reach into the twenties. You will see that the largest class averages we have are currently at Baldwin in the fifth grade and that makes sense as we had those large fourth grade classes move out. We're following that bubble that moves through. And on the last page here, while the high school class sizes are very complicated to break out, we gave you a very simple look, but AP class sizes at the high school this year average 18. We have a high of 26 in one section of AP. Honors class sizes average 17 and Level One and Level Two average sizes of 20 and 18 respectively. So again, we've got very, very favorable class sizes across the district, but we've given this to you in a number of different looks, including the large sheet from, from the, the report that we commissioned. We're gonna continue to watch this. Again, I don't know that this suggests that the report isn't gonna be accurate over time, but we had two new factors. We had full-day kindergarten. We have this high school coming online, so we're gonna continue to watch enrollment very carefully as we move forward.
Do you get any sense of if these are, people are new to town moving in or coming back from private school or anything? Do we have any idea?
No, primarily new to town. Few of them are folks who were out in private school and chose to return. Most of these are folks who are new to town.
Do you have comparable data from Madison about enrollment and...
I don't, but I could ask.
Because historically, they have had a much larger decline than we did. And I'd be interested in knowing, to compare what's happened with us versus them.
Yeah, our report showed us nine years of decline coming in the timeframe studied and year one didn't turn out to be what was predicted. So we're gonna wanna look carefully. And in fact, the demographer who worked on the study when he delivered it pointed out that full-day K in the new high school were variables that he couldn't plan for and expressed an interest in revising it a year or two or three in. So I think it might be something that we'll want to take him up on. So I think it might be something that we'll want to take him up on.
But the numbers actually went up, right, from last year?
We're down 11 students net over last year's enrollment.
Is it, I'm reading this from last year, 3364, is that not right? The overall?
No, the number that we reported for last year was 3,404. So the number that he carried on his was a little bit different than the number that we.
Oh, it's still a projection, okay.
You're not counting out placements in that number?
No, so we've given you another look on this piece of paper that shows you the enrollment in our seven buildings, and then at the bottom catches for out placements and magnets and VOAGs and other Guilford residents who have schooling offered elsewhere than our seven buildings.
Well, I mean, look, it's really, it is interesting. It's a little hard to judge what a trend is from a single year. Obviously, there is something that is causing the demographer's prediction, which was really the last time, if you remember, 10 years ago, was spot-on. I mean, it was almost to the person, and all of a sudden now in year one, it's not spot-on, and same guy.
So, yeah, when we come forward for the budget build, again, what we'll do is we'll take the simple operation of moving each grade level forward, and that allows us to see a graduating class go out, and we will, we will look at both repeating this year's kindergarten numbers versus what our report suggests we should use, and, you know, we'll explain our decision and how we choose to bring that forward when we bring it to you in our initial budget presentation, and we'll have to figure out what's the best way to move forward. But we'll keep working on it. And again, I want to point out that while we made some decisions budgetarily based on these projections, we also end up with really good and really consistent class sizes across the district, which is the most important piece that we want to make sure we're focusing on.
You know, what's really interesting is if you look, every year, the K going to 1 jumps up 20 kids, it looks like to me, probably because they have kids in Montessori or things like that. And maybe this will attenuate it some because there's full-day kindergarten now.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, we've always, yes.
Yes, we've always had.
We've always seen that jump, yep.
Yep, and we want to see if that doesn't continue forward in the next couple of years exactly.
Because if it jumps that much, you know, we're at 220 now, which is, yeah, it's just really close to the numbers that we've had, you know, up in the higher grades, so.
I would not, I wouldn't plan for first-grade classes of 240 based on the history. I think that what we saw was that we saw more of those students coming into K rather than taking K somewhere private and then joining us in 1. But we'll have to see. We'll see how that pans out. Kindergarten is always the biggest vari, it's really easy to plan third-grade class sizes. Kindergarten is always the biggest variable.
Okay, any other thoughts about enrollment? All right, we'll just keep us up to date if anything changes, because obviously it can, but.
Shockingly, that completes my report tonight.
Yes.
There we go.
Any comments about that, Mr. Kazin? Any questions, Mr. Kazin? Anything you want to ask? Okay.
Wonderful report.
Yes. 9.1 on the Board of General Receiver Possible Action, the ratification of the nurses' contract. Who would like to talk about that?
I'll talk about that.
All right.
So we have a new contract with our nurses, and the contract has been ratified. It's a three-year contract. We have two years of wage agreement, and the third year provides for, the only thing that reopens is wages and benefits. The other issues that we discussed in the negotiation are fixed for all three years. We made one change in the structure of the compensation. We added a step, in effect, a seniority step, that people reach after three years of employment, and that results in them getting a 10% increase. But for the 2015-16 year and 1617, there is a 2.5% general wage increase. And then as a, for 1718, we will reopen the contract and negotiate there. The result of this is that the nurses are now being compensated on a basis that's comparable to the surrounding towns. We also were successful in moving the nurses to a different structure in their healthcare coverage. We moved them to the high deductible health plan, which several of the other unions had agreed to previously. So we continue to make progress in that, in that front. All in all, it was a successful negotiation. I think both sides think this was a fair outcome, and as I say, it's been approved by the union membership.
Okay, so that's a motion that we.
I would make the motion that we approve the contract as negotiated.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, questions about the contract? Or, I know that the redlined version was sent around, I think, to everybody last week, and the change, changes merged in, was also circulated last week. And who else, Mr. Sands, who else was on the negotiating committee with you?
Amy Sullivan and.
I think that was Amy.
Yeah.
Amy was, is a nurse who was not here tonight, but I think, yeah, she, she was very involved in it. Yeah, I did a lot of the, tried to do the spreadsheet with the wage structuring and stuff, which you might be able to use for some other things. But I think the main point is that they really were far below the compensation, so, you know, the issue was raising it all up versus the step system, which I think is a fair compromise. We hadn't had a step before with the nurses, with the teachers, obviously, and it can get out of control, I think, sometimes with too many steps, but this was a reasonable compromise for the wages.
Okay, so any other questions, any other comments? All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, and with, thank you to the committee. I know that's a lot of work. Any contract negotiation is a lot of work, but as it turns out, very worthwhile, both for staff and for, for the district, so, thank you.
An appreciation to Mr. Bowden and Mrs. Trudeau as well.
Yes.
They spent a lot of time on this.
Very helpful. 9.2 and 9.3 are related. One is a request to waive the snow removal bid, well, waive the policy really to, that requires bids in order to consider 9.3, which is a proposal that we've received from one contractor to remove snow. We talked about this at substantial length in the Operations Committee meeting. Do you want to, do you want to speak about this, or would you?
Sure, I'd be glad to. As you said, we've been asked to waive our own policy regarding obtaining competitive bids for contracts, which we've done in the past in cases where there's only one supplier of something like a textbook. It doesn't make any sense to go out for bid, or in an emergency situation. I'm not sure if we've had that in recent years, but that's another case where you'd waive, where our policy provides that we can waive the bid requirement if it's in the best interest of the school district. In this particular case, we're interested in getting a bid for snow plowing just here at the high school, not at the other buildings. And unfortunately, the way the timing worked, it would have been best if, say during the summer, in an orderly fashion, we could have gone out to bid and contractors could have come in and looked at the site, gotten a good understanding of where the roads are, where the curbs are, where the snow has to go. But during the summer, it wasn't possible to do that because of the condition of the facility, it just wasn't ready for that. Now here we are in October with winter coming, even though it was just over, it's coming back. And so a good effort has been made within a short time to approach a number of potential providers, seven, I believe, were contacted. Some of them didn't, didn't respond. Some of, some of them responded that they're getting out of the snow plowing business, but we did get two prices, and one in particular, well, I guess the first question is waiving the, to waive the requirement for the bid. I think I've kind of addressed that. That's the reason we're being asked to waive that requirement, and I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so then, then we turn to the question of the substantive proposal, not technically a bid, but the proposals that we have received. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure, sure. So we have numbers from two contractors, and it's been recommended that we choose A&amp;W Construction, which was, oh, I don't have it open, 57,000.
57,000.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Oh, thank you.
520.
Thank you. And that would be a fixed price for the season, whether we have no snow or a ton of snow. Point was made during our operations meeting that they have to make the commitment, they have to have their equipment lined up and so on, so it's really the only way that they can do it. So it's 57,250 of a contractor who has done a substantial amount of work here in the district and whose work has been highly regarded and is very responsive. The other bid was 52,000, I believe. It was a slight amount less by someone who is, is new to the business of snow plowing and not as familiar with our requirements. So it was just a very small difference, and we've been asked to approve the proposal for A&amp;W sanitation.
Okay, is that a motion?
It is.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion, comments? Yeah, I fully support this, but I just want, we don't waive bids very often, you know that, Mr. Bowden knows that. I think probably, I think it's been years since the last time we waived bidding. And this was a very unusual situation in that, at the time, that it would have made sense for us to have gone out to bid, people wouldn't have known what they were bidding on because the site here is just not ready. And so it's, this is a one-off thing. I think we've, I think we talked in the Operations Committee meeting that we do fully expect that this is going, if the proposal is going to be to go to an outside contractor next year, that, that next, continue with an outside contractor, that will be part of a bid, could be a multi-year bid, could be all sorts of things, but this, we don't want to fall into, develop any bad habits relating to this or any other contracted services.
Understood. In fact, Mr. Grunum noted at our previous meeting that in fairness to any of these vendors, they were told upfront when they were contacted that we expect for this to be a one-year opportunity and that we expect to do a full and competitive bid for this work in the year moving forward. So we made that very clear to everybody that we reached out to during this process.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. 9.4 is to receive the preliminary budget timeline. Mrs. Dudley, do you want to present this?
Try to do it without a grin on your face, please.
You can participate as a member of the public.
She still has one more meeting.
I may skip a few of these.
In fact, I should note that the calendar we've given you is in error. Our first meeting occurred in August on this budget preparation when we met with the administrator.
So is there, okay, is there anything, what do we need to highlight tonight? You've highlighted what you are expecting from the leadership team. There is going to be a meeting, right? Mrs. Renner?
Wednesday, October 28th, at Adams Middle School. I don't know the time.
Usually at 7 o'clock.
Usually at 7 o'clock.
And that's for public input on any, any items, any things that we think ought to be part of the 2016-17 budget? Okay, is there anything you want to highlight about this specifically, or?
That was the one date that I really wanted to highlight. That is the early date in the school year where, without agenda, we say to the community, "What are you looking for in this budget process for this coming school year?" And so that was the one date that I really wanted to highlight. From there, we will be doing a lot of the work internally, building the budget to bring the preliminary proposal to you, which happens in, I'm going to say, January.
Okay, so do we need to do anything else on this, or you're just?
This is just to receive item only.
Okay.
Just ask on the, we discussed this briefly in Operations, but the bonding timeline, I think, is very appropriate, better than it has been in some years in terms of doing this earlier. If possible, if we could get things via email prior to the Operations Committee on the 9th?
Yes.
Be able to look over that and compare it to the, you know.
We can send out that 10-year calendar to you in advance.
Instead of just getting it right at the meeting and having to turn it right around because the way the calendar looks, we're trying to get proposed bonding to SBC by December 1st, which is, you know, pretty short after that meeting.
We've got a 10-year capital calendar. We can send that out to you in advance of that meeting, absolutely.
Okay, all right, anything else on the budget timeline? Well, speaking of Mrs. Dudley, 9.5. Mrs. Dudley has served as a member of the LEARN Board of Directors for how many years?
10 years.
10 years. Wow. And, and so we need to reappoint somebody, or appoint somebody new to start as of probably, do they meet monthly?
They meet monthly, on the second Tuesday of the month.
Thursday?
Thursday, second Thursday, and it's usually at 9 o'clock. The meetings are very worthwhile. I've always gotten a lot out of them. You not only meet people from the whole area who are doing the same job as we are, or other Board of Ed members, but also, Dr. Howley makes them very informative. She always has a presentation where you learn something. She keeps you up to date on what's going on in the area and the state. And it's a very informative meeting that, once you get to know some of the people on the shoreline, becomes a very social thing as well, which you enjoy because they also give good breakfast.
Does anybody, anybody think they would be interested in doing that? I know Mrs. Sullivan's not here, and so I want to see if she's interested as well, but is, it's obviously at 9:00 in the morning on Thursdays, it's a little hard for some of us.
It's true, those were real jobs. Might have a problem.
Other jobs.
We also will have a new Board of Ed member.
How long do the meetings typically last?
Uh, two hours, 9 to 11.
Let me suggest this. We, and I'll email Mrs. Sullivan and see if she's interested, and if you're interested, just shoot me an email, and, you know, I don't think it's a formal board appointment. I think probably anybody who wants to do it, if there is sufficient interest, if there's more than two people, or more than one person interested, we'll figure something out. Maybe have one person be an alternate and, you know, whatever, but, so you think it's a good thing to do?
It's, it's been very rewarding for me. I have enjoyed it very much.
Okay.
And I think anyone who wants to get more involved in cooperation with the risk area and also more, learn more about what's going on in the state, it's a very good place to, it's a worthwhile meeting to go to.
I've served on the Executive Committee since Dr. Howley came to LEARN. It's always been a good resource, but I think that she has revitalized it since she has come on board, and it's going to be an interesting time. The state has impaneled a task force to study RESCs and regionalism across the state. They heard testimony last week. Dr. Howley was there. I think it's going to be an interesting time around RESCs in the state moving forward, so I think there will be some good work coming out of it. LEARN did some exceptional work around administrator evaluation that we're going to be introducing to our leadership team this year and probably moving to take on some of what they've done. I think it's becoming an exciting, an exciting RESC in the world of RESCs.
I also learned a lot about, I mean, we're not so much involved about magnet schools because they are very much involved in, with magnet schools, and in fact, LEARN runs five different magnet schools, and including the Marine Science High School, which two of our staff now are there.
Yes, that's correct.
Dr. Spira and Mike Regan.
Mr. Regan, who actually has moved on.
Has he?
He was in the administration there. He's moved on. He's currently an assistant principal in East Tatum.
Good for him, good for him.
All right, so anyway, just send me an email and we'll, we'll move forward, but I think it is important that we do have some representation there. And so if we could maybe carry that over to the next month's agenda, so make sure we don't, that doesn't get dropped off.
I'll make sure we carry it over.
So one of the really productive aspects of being on the board last year, I think we all agreed, was going on the learning walks. And it is time again for the learning walks. There are seven spaces, given that we have seven schools, and so I'm going to pass the, or you already got the master. All right, Dr. Freeman has the master, we'll start.
I'll take it.
Just as we pass it down, we'll.
Would you pass it to your?
You can add your name.
We would just like to ask.
And maybe, maybe your, Mrs. Fianella can reach out to Mrs. Sullivan and add her to one of, because we can double up on one of the months, or two of the months.
Right, right. I'd like to ask that we only double up where necessary, so we'd prefer to spread one board member to. to spread one board member to all seven visits and then only double up and not have three or four board members overwhelm one school.
Right. Okay.
Overwhelmed.
Yeah.
The teachers get a little nervous when they see people walk in, especially Board of Education.
So do the kids.
Nine point seven, received from the policy committee, a policy and regulation relating to concussions.
Yes, so as Mr. Jarvis mentioned earlier, we in this district have been ahead of the curve in terms of concussion management, but we are putting into formal policy and regulation legislative mandates around concussion management, communication, coaches' responsibilities, et cetera. So what you see in front of you is a policy and a regulation to address concussion management within the school system. We do have copies that have track changes on them, I just want to note that because this is a new policy, the track changes reflect decision-making by the policy committee regarding Cade recommendations of, and alternative kind of guides of what, examples of what could be included in the policy, different ways to, to provide that information, and so those track changes really reflect the policy committee's decisions about what we would and felt was necessary to include, to fully cover both the policy and the regulation. There should also be a clean copy provided so that, because there's so much that got crossed out, sometimes it's easier to read that way. But again, as Mr. Bowden mentioned, he spoke with our athletic director, Mr. Jarvis, about all the aspects of this, and Carol Ott has also been consulted, so that we feel extraordinarily comfortable that we have not only reflected what goes on here, but fully reflected the legislative mandate.
Okay, so there's no, we don't have to act on this tonight?
This is a receive, and then for acting on next month.
Okay, questions now?
Yeah, one que, I should ask this when Jake was here, but the pre-impact testing, do we, do you know what we recommend on that, or is that for all sports that potentially have contact, or do you know what we're doing with that?
I, I, sorry, do you...
Yeah, I believe it's all sports that have any possibility of contact.
Okay, is that a policy, or should it be, or it's just a, the way to practice?
I think it's just an expectation at the building level that if you're going to participate...
But it only happens in the high school?
Yes, I don't believe we do pre-impact testing at Adams, yes.
And so, and the sports would be football, soccer, are they all of them?
You know, so things you might not even think of, my son's a fencer, he had to do impact test, testing, you know, that's not one you're, you're necessarily thinking of in terms of head injuries, so I think it's fairly expansive.
I'll check, we'll get a list.
Golf?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I, once again, I mean, I think one of the things is, because...
Simple.
Yeah, I think that, I think the approach that's been taken is to really be, to, to really cover as much as possible.
I really think it's all of them.
Yeah, I mean, I, my understanding...
I want to be careful before I suggest cross-country, but I really think it's all of them.
I don't, maybe...
Yeah, I'll, I'll check and have a comprehensive listing for you.
Okay, well, I mean, it's good to hear from Mr. Jarvis that we're ahead of the curve, that is where we want to be on this particular issue. So any other questions tonight, or we can just, if people have questions between now and the next meeting, send them to Dr. Freeman, who can forward them to Mr. Jarvis, and we can try to get those taken care of.
Thank you.
Nine point eight was the committee on the baseball field and the gym at GHS. I think where I left this, where we left this two months ago, was we had a request to name the baseball field, and then we also had the issue about what to do about naming the new high school gym, and does it carry over from the old high school gym with Judge Kenefik? And we need, we need to appoint a committee. I've asked Dr. Freeman to try to identify some, some suitable committee members, including Mr. Jarvis, and that is in, in effort.
We're just checking, yep, we've identified those folks, and we're just checking to find out that they'd all be willing to serve before presenting those suggested names to you for your approval and for you to seat the committee, hopefully at your next meeting.
Okay, so that should get, be carried over to the next, the November meeting as well? Any, any comments on that, or any thoughts? All right, ten is committee reports, policy committee, anything else you all are working on?
Nothing, I think, obviously, we were just working on the concussion, I mean, we have a, a list of, of issues we want to cover as we move forward, but we don't have anything pressing to mention at the moment.
Okay, operations committee?
I think we covered everything except, I'd like to mention about the food service. By the first of the year, we'll be serving breakfast in all schools, which I think is a really important part of the educational day, and a salad bar will be opening up at our, the first school that will be having one. So there's some exciting things going on, the...
Jones.
Jones, yeah.
Yep, and the participation in the program at, here at the high school is way up from what it was previously, not surprising.
Not surprising.
Yeah.
Compare the space in the old cafeteria to...
Not surprising.
Much more inviting place to have.
And the food.
And the food, yeah, great. Okay, curriculum instruction assessment committee, we've got a meeting...
This month before your next meeting.
And what's the subject?
World language. I mean, that was the topic that the committee said that they wanted to look at, that was last spring, so that's our first one. We'll also be doing a few other pieces, a follow-up from the Borland Report.
The study on high achieving students, we'll be giving you an update on progress made there.
But the majority of the work, and a little bit around assessment, but the majority of the work will be around world language.
Okay, terrific. GHS Building Committee Liaison is...
They're meeting tonight, they're meeting elsewhere in the building tonight as we meet. The last time we met, we were told that we're approximately forty percent through demolition. They're working on filling the front of the building, we're going through punch lists and some small warranty items as we move into the building, which is not unexpected. I guess the biggest update is that we had a really successful ribbon cutting opportu, and I appreciate everybody who was able to attend, I thought it was a wonderful community event. In fact, it went so well that there were some suggestions that we have a follow-on similar open house, and we'll plan to do that before the weather turns to inclement. We won't have all of the pomp and circumstance, but again, open the building to community, invite our community members who don't necessarily have a daily connection to the building to come in and see the building.
And is that when we're going to do a special, a specific invitation to neighbors, or is that a separate event, or...
I think the building committee has already stayed in touch, and in fact, Long Hill Road and the residents of New Eng, Long Hill Farms and the residents of New England Road and Schoolside, I all believe have identified liaisons to the building committee. So I think that they've done that, but yes, we could ask the building committee to invite them specifically to that event as well. And Lori Hahn and I are working on another suggestion and putting together a GCTV opportunity that will highlight not just the work done here at the high school over, over the last several years, but include all of the safety and security and office work that has gone into the other six buildings, and sort of do a highlight on some of the capital projects that have been done in the district over the last couple of years, and I'll be reaching out to a, a board member to help them participate in that. Obviously, Mr. Masenti will be highlighted in that, and probably some of the other principals as well, and focus not just on this project, but some of the other important work that's going on as well.
Mr. Masenti has also done a tour on Facebook, so you could, that you can see.
There is, right, and that same tour is linked to our website, so you can have the, the A-plus tour is what he brands it as, but you can have the A-plus tour by going to our website, and, and the, the camera follows Mr. Masenti through the building and hits all the highlights and has a lot of fun. Takes between twenty and thirty minutes, which is a lot shorter than the real A-plus tour.
Yes, yes, he shortened it quite a bit.
I, I did have the opportunity at the ribbon cutting, or in, in the walk-around afterwards, to run into one of our neighbors who approached me and was very excited to see the inside of the building, and very excited to see kind of how it turned out, and I was able to thank him, which I realize is one of many, many more neighbors, for his patience during, during construction and all that that meant, but I think our continued reaching out is a, is a terrific idea.
They really have borne all the inconvenience for all of the benefit that the whole community will, will experience.
Right, right.
Absolutely, it's a good idea.
All of Long Hill Road has had an impact.
You're right.
With dump trucks and whatever else going, cement trucks.
And now they're, and now they're grinding up your road, trimming trees and doing everything. Seriously? Do they wait to the first week of school to tear up every major road in the town of Gilford?
Literally, yes, because all of the state funds were delayed all summer long, so all of, all of the state road funds were released in August, and now everyone's rushing to do it while it's still warm enough to put down pavement, so yes, they literally did wait for the opening of school.
Excellent. Your state at work for you. Any liaison to town committee reports?
Main Acquisition Committee met on October 1st, and no business appropriate to the Board of Ed was discussed.
Okay.
Yet I was there.
So noted.
Item 11, public questions, anybody have any questions? Please, yes, you can just tell us and we'll repeat it, that's okay.
Okay. I was also had the opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting ceremony, and then I was also fortunate to take the tour of the school, and it was very, very exciting. I mean, I wanted to compliment, thank all the community, because it was just one of us doing it, and the Board of Ed and Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and all the community support really allowed us to have this wonderful, wonderful high school, and it only took us twelve years, you know?
Ah, pretty much.
It only took us twelve years, but it's here. I am very thrilled, and I am very excited that all the meetings that I have attended, all the participation I did, it came to fruition, and with that in mind, with that said, I would like to say that this will be my last meeting that I will be able to attend in person. You know, the, all the great school comes with a negative on my part, because it is a little too far for me to walk from the, from the door to the library, and then as I'm noticing that it might be slippery even in wintertime when it's wet, so I'm going to continue to follow the educational issues, but I will tell you through it and, you know, through my TV. Thank you.
Well, we certainly, we, you, you have been our most faithful, regular, meeting tender, and I don't, attendee, the, you, I think there's nobody that's been more involved than you, and nobody more interested in what we're trying to, to accomplish, what the community's trying to accomplish. We may be able to talk a little bit about trying to figure out some way we can get you up here a little more easily, too. We'll, we'll talk about that off, off camera.
I think when the, when the front second story loop opens, I'll give you a call, Suzanne, and we can take a look again.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
And also, I know, we all know that you are computer literate, so we would, we would welcome your insights and your opinions as you watch GCTV. Write us, tell us what you think.
Well, we, we haven't seen the last of you, Suzanne, that's my prediction, and you want to, you want to...
I think so, I think we could work on something.
Comment that Mrs. Dudley has been giving me right home. Well, I'm missing that, so I figure it's time for me to...
All right, well, we'll figure something, we'll talk about it. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public questions? We're out, almost out of public, so I guess, I guess not. So we have the one executive session item on a discipline issue, so if, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are, we'll go to a new executive session, we'll come out of executive session only to adjourn, and there will, will be no further public votes this evening. Thank you.